Uh, what do we got here?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, that's good enough. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, thank you all for coming. Oh my God, is that who I think it is back there?
That's the Brit.
Oh, okay. Uh, thanks for coming to the meeting today. This is a special board meeting to discuss, primarily to discuss the point of sale, time of transfer ordinance draft. When I did the agenda, I added to it discussion on the ordinance to dissolve GLUA because we could have done that. Uh, I'm gonna strike that mostly because after I put this stuff out, Steve Detmer, trustee, he is unable to be here today. And he has a lot of input for the GLUA dissolution. So I'm gonna strike it, but then leave on the agenda that we can discuss it. We have it here if anybody has any questions. Uh, we can certainly go over it a little bit.
Roll call attendants?
Yeah, I thought, actually thought that was Detmer wanting to get in there. So with that backstory, could we have a roll call, please? Clerk Pern?
Clerk Jerrhops.
Here.
Clerk Pern here, Supervisor Bertrand here.
Here.
Trustee Detmer.
He is excused and-
Trustee Monet.
Trustee Monet is too. I, there was, uh, I posted this earlier than we had originally discussed and he made a doctor's appointment for this day and was probably unable to change it, and that was my fault. But he and I discussed this a little bit. We're not gonna move mountains today. And it will be on video. So concerning the agenda, I will make a motion that we accept the agenda with discussion on ordinance to dissolve GLUA, striking that, but adding uh, as a second item, just a general discussion on GLUA for the public who is here on the dissolution ordinance. So we'll switch that from a board, board discussion to a general discussion. So on the motion to strike the discussion for the ordinance to dissolve GLUA and add a general discussion on the GLUA dissolution ordinance, I will make that motion. Do we have a second?
Sure, I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Pern. So we have a motion. All those in, uh, is there any discussion on this? Or additional discussion from the two board members here?
I have one thing to add, but I can do that under board comments about the building and the final bill and that kind of stuff.
Okay, but yeah, this is just on discussion for that motion.
Right.
Okay, then I'll end the discussion. So all those in favor of approving the amendment as changed, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed, the same? Okay, the motion carries. So the first thing on the agenda is a discussion on the point of sale, time of transfer ordinance draft. I put some copies back there. This is gonna take a little while, but hopefully not real long. As a backstory, this is, uh, almost in its entirety, the exact same point of sale, time of transfer that the Central Michigan District Health Department used for Isabella County. Part of the rationale in using their version of a point of sale, time and transfer uh, is that they're going to have very little problem with us doing what they have already done. If we start to alter from this, it'll turn into a bit of a negotiation. I have a reasonably good rapport with the Health Department people, Mark and Steve King. And this is also just the first piece of our overall plan for what would happen for septic ordinances for the township. The point of sale, time and transfer is intended to just be the first piece. From there, we as a board will have to have a couple of meetings with public involved about where we're going for the rest of the town, or for the township, when it does not involve a sale, when a house is not being sold. This is pretty intrusive. And my personal feeling is there is no better time to try and get everything straightened up up to current code than when somebody's trying to sell the property. There's money on the table, people are motivated. So for point of sale and time of transfer only, I agree that this can be as it is written, and it appears pretty stringent. So I certainly do not want to read this whole thing. But before I start going into some of the questions that I had that I posed to the, to the board members, do either of you as board members have any questions or statements about this thing before we start going through the, the areas that are kinda like, what are we gonna do with this part?
Well, I will just say, we're not gonna piecemeal an ordinance together. Like, we're gonna do, do the ordinance, that's in there, there's other parts that need to go in there as well, and then do it, correct? We're not gonna, we're not just gonna do the ordinance, the time of transfer, and then three months down the road, add, add things to it? Like, we're not doing that, correct?
In order to do a point of sale, time and transfer, that's all that can be in here. It's a first piece of other things that we would not add to this. They would be separate from it. So this is point of sale, time and transfer for any, any proposed sale of a piece of property. If we then go to, for a general principle, and we've discussed some of this before, for the township in general, we're not talking about when you sell. Uh, we may do something that has a timeframe on how long it will take you, that you need to have your septic system and well system on record with the Health Department.
So why can't we do it all in one ordinance?
Because this is specific to point of sale, time and transfer.
Okay, that's one piece to it, but let's add the other pieces as well. I don't-
We need to, we need to decide how we want those other pieces to look. There's a, we've, you know, we've talked about it before. There's a lot going on with, we as a board need to decide how we're gonna approach the possibilities of what can happen for the rest of the township. Perfect example would be the previous board had a very stringent septic inspection policy, but not a well water inspection policy. And their demand was if you failed, you needed a high-performance tank that might cost you 20 grand. We, I doubt very much that this board's gonna decide to go further with that. So we need to decide. The other version of that is if you have a fail, you would need to replace it with just up to current code. That's all. If you have a fail. Other things we will need to discuss have to do with if your system is functioning, and this says it clearly, they all do, it is not intended to force somebody who has a functioning system to immediately have to upgrade to current code. So all of those are separate pieces that are not, they could not be included in this because this is specific to the sale of a piece of property. We, yes, we need to add more things, but they would not be added to this. If we have a septic ordinance title on the webpage, it would be this, there will be other things.
I'm just, I don't understand why we can't do it all at once.
Well, I'm not proposing it all at once. You guys have had it for a month.
Well, I gave you guys some background on some suggestions from myself and other people.
I have no, yeah, I have no problem.
I think a lot of this should be incorporated in the time of sale, point of sale, time of transfer. I, I don't understand why we need to do two, is what I'm saying.
If we did a point of sale, time and transfer, you cannot put things in there that are not related to a point of sale and a time of transfer. We cannot affect the rest of the township who is not selling a piece of property with this ordinance. But this ordinance can affect certain people who are selling in a manner that can ask for, come up to current code if you have a fail, and get their well inspected. And again, the reason that it's set up that way is because the money is changing hands, people are motivated. If you're gonna say you need to do everything that we suggest in here, this, a point of sale, time and transfer is the time to do it. I, I, I understand, I looked at, yeah, the stuff you got, the stuff you sent me is the stuff we need to start going over after this, in my view, anyway.
Yeah, I just thought we should, could do it all in one. I mean-
I do not believe we can do that because we're impacting everybody else whose-
Well, this, the, the, the material I sent you impacts everybody as well.
Right, this doesn't. This is only if you're selling your property.
This applies to a very small percentage of people.
Right, that's why it's a starting point.
I don't see, I don't see also why it can't be included in some of the things. Put the point of sale, time of transfer in with some of these other things. We were talking about a two-year plan to get inspected for everyone and get a, get this ordinance passed effective July 1st. And, and we've been discussing this point of sale, time of transfer for months. We really have. And this is too little, too long to come to this decision, I think. But if, if you're saying we gotta start this, well, okay, let's have something better for the board meeting then. Uh, if this is a start, great, but we gotta get some movement here. This is, uh, it's just been too slow.
Okay, if, if neither of you consider that it's movement, we can reschedule other meetings and start going after all of the other stuff that needs to be settled out between this board. An example being you say two years, I say three or more. There's a lot of other things that come into play. We have a three-tiered inspection setup that in talking with the Health Department, they will probably approve two. We need to wait for the fetch system to come online from the Health Department in order to be able to determine which homes have no inspection on record. All of that stuff and more has nothing to do with somebody selling their property. Now, if you wanna have it all together in one huge package, you want my estimate, two months, and a lot of arguing between us. And that's okay if that's what you want. This is, has always been proposed by me as a starting point in a Lego block setup that has different things added to it. You start with this, you start adding the other pieces to it. When we decide as a board by vote, how those other pieces are gonna look. If you would like to flip it and do all of that work first and throw it out there together, I actually really don't care. I hear every day from you guys, what's the holdup? What's taking so long? This is a start. If you wanna wait longer and come up with a complete package, I'm okay. It doesn't really matter to me.
I'm against waiting longer. I, I want somebody to start adhering to the rules that we could put in place quickly. Not completely, the ordinance, but enough stuff to say, hey, you gotta have your inspection. You gotta be on file with the Health Department, or else we're, we're defeating ourselves. This is a start, I agree. If you're saying we have to have this for a building block, I'm not sure I agree, but I'll certainly go along with it so we can get started. But we gotta really move this train down the line here. This is not, not at all what I was thinking about. I'll begin.
I'll say this for the record. One of the reasons we're not diving into this is because even way back when we used to meet all five of us, before we were ever elected and violating any open meeting acts, we knew this was gonna be contentious. We have different opinions in this board about what happens to the rest of this township. This is something that is proposed, as far as I am concerned, this is the most intrusive thing you could do. If you wanted to consider doing this township-wide, remember, we got voted in to not do this township-wide. But if you wanna try and make a complete package and go that route, okay. We will have to set up, similar to the budget, several meetings to discuss all of those other fine points. I'll throw another one out here right now. The Health Department will agree with this. Anybody who has a previous inspection in Lyon Township is in compliance with this that passed. And there's 600 and some of them. Ten people failed. One of them called me the other day, they have, they have to do. If you fail, you have to replace up to current code. If we, when we start to alter and pull back from this, then we are dealing with whether the Central Michigan District Health Department will approve what we would like to do differently. And we're gonna do it differently. We're not gonna do the same ordinance that the people voted us here to not have. But we can do all of that. I, honestly, it does not matter to me if you wanna try and do it all at once, but be prepared for a hard workload and a rigorous one through the next two months to try and sort all those details out. Or we can put this out and do the same thing, and as we work each piece out, add it to the overall septic ordinance. This is only one piece.
So are you saying that Health Department system is still, you still can't get access to who's on record?
I talked with Nick Sargent, who is connected to some of that. It may be up next week. Here's the kicker. If we do less than what they want us to do, this is pretty much what they wanna do. I have negotiated down from that for a couple of different things. If we do less, it will not go into the fetch system. They won't accept it. But we can do less and negotiate with them. The, the end of that story is if we do something for our township people, irregardless of the sale, don't even talk about sale, if we do something for our township people that is less restrictive than the last one, which is pretty much what we ran on, there will have to be negotiations with the Health Department before they will accept and put it into their fetch system. The reverse of that, we can do it ourselves. We can create whatever we wanna create, and we can track it ourselves within Lyon Township. Those are all things that, as a township board, we need to get into. We don't need to get any, into anything other than the things that are highlighted in here that may be minor, like, what do you wanna do about that? I can tell you for sure, one of the things here that I, uh, this says that the well inspections need to be done by certified inspectors from the Central Michigan District Health Department. I checked on that 'cause I thought, why can't we use Raven Analytical out of Roscommon? They will not put it in their fetch system unless their people do it because that's guaranteeing, uh, it's like evidence, you know? Chain of, chain of, uh, whatever it is, not command, but I mean, chain of control over the water sample to the point that they get a test.
Boy, 'cause you're paying them too.
Yes, so in some ways, if we wanna have it in an overall system that is accessible by anybody long after we are no longer on the township board, we have to appease the Health Department and work with them. This is no problem 'cause they wrote this. When we start doing what we wanna do, there's, we'll see. I have hopes. Six months ago, when we first won, they were like, we're not working with you on anything but what we want. Recently, they're, they'll work with us. I, I'm sorry, I'm getting long-winded on that.
Well, if we need to start, if we need to start, I say, okay, to part of this, but very soon, we need to come up with these, whether they're meetings or public meetings or two-people discussions that go somewhere else. I know we don't wanna violate any open meetings act, but we gotta have some basic idea of what. And, and like I said, we've disagreed over the time. I want the shortest possible time, and you want something longer to give a bird. They've had plenty of time to do stuff, even from when the last ordinance was put into effect.
Who's had plenty of time?
Pardon?
Who's had plenty of time to do it?
Whoever wanted to do it.
We have to do it.
We, I did it. I had mine checked that I had-
No, no, I'm saying it to, to create the ordinance.
No, 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 not that.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Not, not that. I'm saying the people out there. They could've complied at any time if they wanted to. But you wanna give them more time?
Well, and the, and this is, I, that's what I'm trying to avoid getting into today.
Yeah, okay.
This is a separate piece of something that applies to only if you sell your home and pretty much guarantees for this township that at least in these situations, the well will get checked, and the septic will get checked. And if there is a fail, they will have to replace up to current code. So it's a, it's a future thing, and yes, it's a small percentage, but it's a piece of the package.
Okay, it's a start.
Uh, I'm not even sure how we started on that, other than to look at. Yeah, well, there wa, yeah, and there won't be a motion today. We can go over it. You got anything else you wanted to add to it?
No.
All right. So I'm not gonna read this whole thing. I will read so that the audience is aware the issues that I had passed on to the board about, we need to talk about these aspects in this point of sale, time and transfer. And on the second page, under the definitions, one of them I had just mentioned, under number five, and it should be typed in here in italics and underlined. These are the questions I was throwing at our board to talk about. So that one was, uh, they're talking about conduct evaluations on the water supplies. And I typed in here, who, I think we can live with just being tested by a water testing company for the purposes of the regulation. I have found out since that is not true. We will need to use Central Michigan District Health Department certified well inspectors. Moving into the next page. And this actually applies more to what we were just talking about. In number eight, when you define a fail, there's a definition there about effluent and sewage and a storm drain. All of that is perfectly understandable. It does not, and what I typed in here is this does not allow for slow drainage of systems that have low use rates. The way that it went with the previous board was if they had a system that was running slow, the Health Department was supposed to make the, the call on whether that was a fail or not. They failed none of them. When we talk as a board, we need to decide if somebody who comes up here three weeks in the summer and has a functioning system, but it's running slow, it is not spilling out on the ground, but the water level comes higher than the outlet pipe when it's being used a lot, technically is not a fail, we need, in my opinion, we need to build something into the other steps of what we would call a septic, uh, ordinance for the township. Some allowance for that. It makes no sense to me that you force somebody who uses it very little to have to replace the whole thing if it is still functioning. And again, this is my opinion. Part of that is the claim that the failing system is, uh, or that that contributes to the contamination in the lake is a whole nother thing that I didn't wanna get into right now. But of the 640-some inspections, only 10 of them were complete fails. I think another 30 or 40 were they're recommending you come up to current code. As a homeowner, you don't have to do that. That's a recommendation. But if you have a fail, you gotta do something about it. Association is not causation. You can't just say, oh, okay, that's causing this. So I, I have it in here because this would be, as you said, this is one of the points that we as a board need to work out. I personally, uh, don't like chasing everybody around who has low use rates. And I, uh, my neighbor is a perfect example. He comes up about two weekends of summer, hasn't had it pumped in 20 years. Uh, they came in to pump it. It doesn't need to be pumped. There's not enough sludge in the bottom of it that need to be pumped. It's functioning fine. Now, if he came and he moved in there, probably within about two months, something would go wrong. But that's not what we're dealing with here. The previous inspections included, did not include a test to determine if you need it pumped. They said, pretty much, if you haven't done it, you need to do it now, and then you would need to do it every five years and going forward. There was no connection at all to whether it needed to be pumped. I've worked with Nick Sargent on some of this. And when we were really battling with GLUA before we were elected, uh, my proponent was you call, you call a hauler and have him come in here and look at your tank, and they're gonna be able to tell you whether you got a problem or not. Nowhere in all of that was it ever said until well after we were elected. And I was talking to Nick Sargent about it. He says, yeah, it's a five-minute test. You shove a pipe down there. Tells you how much sludge is in the bottom of that tank in relationship to the capacity of the tank, and that determines whether you pump it or you don't pump it. Oh. And these are things that we as, as a board, I think, need to decide before we launch into anything further than the point of sale, time and transfer. On that particular thing, do either of you guys got a comment? Like I said, I'm throwing this out here. Certainly, we need to talk more and more about all of it, but on that particular thing about slow drainage that is functioning, you got anything you wanna say now, or?
No, I'm good.
Okay. How about you? All right, I promise to move this along quick if I could. Going to number nine. Private water supply system does not comply with any of the following Safe Drink Water Act. I put it in here 'cause I'm not sure that there are other state of Michigan rules that were applicable at the time of construction of a private water supply system. Another thing that we need to find out when we start talking about everybody else. Uh, going to the next page, for the sake of moving fast, we will end up with many meetings on a lot of this.
I just don't want to drag this thing on and on and on. Like, we, I think we need to, each board member, take it home, go through it, get your points in it, what you don't like, what you like. And then we sit down at the next work session, go through it all, agree, disagree, and let's get something, let's get something moving. We don't want to go three months, four months, like, this is-
We can certainly, we can certainly do that, but that could not be included in a point of sale, time and transfer. It could be included in an overall ordinance for the township of the specific things that we are gonna add to it. We can do that. I, like I said, I, anyway, I'm gonna, I'll keep going through for the sake of time. So on the next page, section four, there was really nothing in there. This is a big one, but maybe not. On the next page, all of it is italicized and underlined for the evaluation, for basically, how do you get around this thing? There's a whole bunch of stuff listed here that would allow a person to avoid doing some of this. The biggest thing that I have heard of so far is that if you have an LLC or if you have a title from a family member to another family member, if you're passing the, the home on to them. Uh, and I hear that a lot. I had talked to our attorney that we could include in what we do going forward that they could create something that boxes some of that out so that there's really less ways that people could avoid having this done. So that's a pretty long list. I've seen shorter ones. I know this is the one that the Health Department would accept. Uh, I would, I'm suggesting that we would probably add a piece from our attorney too in regards to trying to make sure that uh, someone, a family member cannot sell to a family member and transfer that title without these inspections taking place. In the next page. Uh, that is right on the top. Number two, that's what I was just talking about with septic tanks must be pumped and serviced by a hauler, provide written documentation- septic tanks must be pumped and serviced by a hauler, provide written documentation. Yes, that's all true, but in my opinion, this does not need to be done in some cases of little...of little use, and we will certainly have to discuss all of that part. Uh, going farther in the same page, number seven, under...under number...under B, number seven. Recommendations to extend the life of the onsite disposal system and to make improvements in compliance with the environmental health regulations. Absolutely. We need to be pumping out the information to people, correct information of how to take care of your septic system. So included in it would be, if this is happening, certainly in the point-of-sale time of transfer, that information needs to be put out there, change hands from the owner to the buyer. And I would think going forward, when we do the other things that we want to do for the rest of the township, that would be a big part of it. There's no reason to not educate everybody. You do not put chemicals in there to help it. It kills everything. Uh, you need bacteria in there to help digest everything that's in there. Uh, probably...well, the next one is number eight, water system non-compliance. I put question marks there because I think we're probably going to end up going with environmental health regulations. The question marks were more about exactly, you know, would we look to change that? I doubt it, but we can certainly discuss it. Uh, and the...this, uh, the health...this was supposed to be a health department decision in the old Lyon septic ordinance, not the inspector. To my knowledge, an inspector made no calls at all on whether a system failed or not. They take pictures, they get the information, they send it to the health department. The health department makes the determination. And as I said, they did not fail slow systems. They're not failing you if you're not up to current code. None of that was happening. They...you can...they can suggest it, but they can't demand that you do it. They can demand, if you have a fail, an absolute, flat-out fail, you are at their mercy. Uh, next page, under C, section seven. That, again, referred to the water testing, and we already kind of went over that. Probably going to have to go with who they have and who they train. Going down further on that page, uh, under number section eight. "On...on written notice from the C...Central Michigan District Health Department of a failed system or water supply, the owner, buyer, or authorized agent shall within 10 days." I think that's pretty quick. I just put 20 as a suggestion there. "Submit a proposed corrective action plan." In the final version of this, we will, as a board, have to decide on the final language of this, if we're going to pursue trying to, uh, approve this as a point-of-sale time of transfer and build to it. Next page, uh, on the top, proposed corrective action unless...oh, yeah, there's a time limit, 180 days. It doesn't really say it, but it implies, or in the other one, that, you know, if you can't get a contractor or if weather is prohibiting the work, there's got to be some leeway in there, and there is. It just doesn't really say it. We need to probably add that to what we do, um, especially the weather. Uh, but there...you know, when the contract...when they were doing these inspections, they were busy and, you know, you're at their mercy. 180 days, I think that's fine. It would just be an appeal based on weather, and I cannot find anybody to come and do this work yet. Uh, section C or NC. Uh, immediate health hazard presents an immediate health hazard. Uh, I put in there, "How and to who the owner and the...and the other responsible party should take such measures." I would strike that at this point. I put this stuff in here a couple of months ago. If you have a fail, that's an immediate health hazard. If they...let's say the owner wants to sell a property, they have to get the inspection done. Inspector comes in, inspects it, you got a fail. You got...your septic tank is busted in half on the bottom, you're throwing effluent right straight into the groundwater, whatever the fail might be. Uh, that's a health hazard to everybody, so the who and why doesn't really matter. At that point, under this, the homeowner needs to fix that problem within 180 days, whether he sells it or not. And nine for enforcement, uh, remedies provided by the regulation. Penalties are authorized for law violations of other provisions in the district sanitary code. That...their district sanitary code, since I put this in here about what might that be, they have a separate sanitary code that they use, uh, for the health department that is applicable to this point-of-sale time of transfer ordinance in Isabella County. If we go with this, we're basically only dealing with their regular codes in effect for building, or if you have a fail, what you have to do. And...and somewhere in here, and I think in the other ones, it's going to say, "No way does any of this get you out of what you have to do for the health department if you have a fail." Uh, going down from there to the next page. Thank God, that's it. So the purpose of this meeting was to make sure that all the board members, and I know Timothy is aware and Steve's gone through it, that we at least open the discussion about those particular areas, and then we can set a meeting then to discuss those further, possibly come to solutions on it, and either vote the thing in or out. Probably in one meeting, we could do that. So you're all aware of what my questions were. You gave me input about adding things to it. Any other comments from the board right now? Okay. The second thing before going to public comments, and this, again, trying to do it briefly, would be a discussion on the, uh, the motion to adopt the dissolution plan for Garrish and Lyon Utility Authority. For those of you who are not aware of this, uh, the board...this board, uh, at our last meeting approved that we want to dissolve GLUA, but we did not adopt this plan. This came from our attorney. There...I don't know that there's any dispute in it, but at the time of that meeting, at least one of the board members did not have the plan in hand, wasn't satisfied with it, didn't want to vote on it, until we had a chance to look at it. So, uh, we are now here. That's the plan. I suspect that at our next meeting, we will be able to vote on this, because everybody's had it, and Steve in particular has had it in his hand. For the public, I don't know if any of you are aware of that or not, or that that happened, but probably the dissolution process has several steps in it. Uh, this board has already voted, we are going to dissolve. Once we get into enacting this ordinance, it is a series of steps that have to be gone through to dissolve, and we have a GLUA meeting on the 10th to go over it some more. The GLUA board needs to do a bunch of that and get that information back to the townships. The biggest issue that I'm aware of, anyway, was there was a potential for a $66,000 debt that I believe has been resolved. Uh, the other issue is, I believe there's 44. You would know the number. How much money do we have left in the...in the donations fund?
It's going to be around $50,000 or so, I believe. There's...there's a number on...
Yeah.
I think we'll have a much better understanding Tuesday on, but...
Yeah. In any case, we, as...yeah, the GLUA board needs to make decisions on how that donor money, let's just say, what's going to happen to that donor money as GLUA dissolves. So if, uh, I don't know that we had any disagreement between the township board on the language that the...our attorney used in this. It pretty much mimics what Garrish already did. A couple of things are different, uh, but we're in a position now that probably at our work session even. We could probably vote this thing, or at least make a motion to vote it in and proceed on. Is there any comments from either of the board members about that particular, um, document or what the intent would be as far as taking it to our work session and doing something? No, okay. Okay, so that's all we had to present. Uh, we're entering into the public comments.
No, we aren't.
What did we miss?
Board comments.
Oh. Yeah, we can do them again. Yeah, okay. Board comments in general, not related to where we started and the agenda. Yes, you're correct. So board comments, sure.
Okay, well, the one, now that we have a final price, I'd like to make a motion to finally pay the painters. They came in right at their budget.
If it can wait to the work session when we're all here, that might be nicer, but I...
Well, they...but they know...they know what we had approved of tentatively, uh, that was the $5,000, and, uh, these painters have done a wonderful job.
What's the exact amount?
$5,000.
I would have worked on it until they fetish too, though. They're not done.
Yeah.
Doesn't make any difference to me. I can do a motion and see what happens to it, or we can wait.
You want to make a motion?
I can. Come on, me too.
Well, either one.
Okay.
Let's make a motion to pay, or I'll make the motion to pay.
Well, you...I got to do it.
Oh, yeah.
I can make a motion that we pay the amount of $5,000 to the painters.
Upon completion.
Upon completion.
Upon completion, right.
For the job that they did in painting and, uh, additional work, as far as taping everything off and taking, you know, everything that they did related to it, is included in that $5,000, right?
Power washing.
That was a set price, yeah. Power washing.
And the parking lot deal, stripes and stuff, right?
Isn't that separate?
That's...that's not them.
Oh, it's not?
No.
Oh, then it was.
Okay, let me back up then. I'll make a motion that we approve the payment of the $5,000 to the painting company that we contracted with to paint this building, and that was for painting it and all the other work that they did related to painting. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, uh, then up for discussion for the board. I would prefer to wait until our work session, when we have the other two members here, or at least one of the other two. That's just me. Any other board comments in the discussion?
Doesn't matter to me. We can wait. We can do it now.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, so on the motion to pay $5,000 to the painters for the contract we had for them to paint the building and all the work related to that, we would need a roll call vote for that, uh, Clerk Perrin.
Treasurer Hopps?
Yes.
Clerk Perrin, yes. Supervisor of Work Trend.
No, only insofar as I'd like to see everybody here, but that's fine. Okay, motion carries two to one. Any other board comments? Okay, then we are moving into public comments. If anybody has anything they'd like to say about these two issues or anything else, you come right up and say it. Please state your name. Keep it under five minutes. We should be good. Hello, sir.
Hello. How are you doing today?
Good.
Pat Springsteen, uh, Lyon Township resident. Um, I would like to talk about the point-of-sale thing. Uh, I look at like putting a band-aid on a wound, that you know you're going to have to go back in and stitch it up. Anytime you try to piecemeal these types of things, it becomes more and more...and more difficult with each step. You've done one thing, the public is going to say, "Well, why didn't you just do the whole thing at one time?" Uh, that...that's almost a guarantee. Um, the point-of-sale thing, you know, it has all these stipulations in here, you know, regarding who doesn't have to, if you're doing it to a...to a spouse or somebody else. Um, that's a pretty big catch-all on an awful lot of things. Um, as far as certification, we should...we should go by with the...what the fetch thing and what, uh, the Board of Health wants. I mean, that's why we have an overriding Board of Health, because they say, "This is what we want." If they want certain things for, um, a septic thing or the water thing, where they want to have custody to it, we shouldn't be sitting there going, "Well, we don't agree with you." Uh, as far as usage of a place and making, um, exceptions for that, whom is going to oversee that? I mean, Mr. Bertram used the situation of he knows what his neighbor does, so if I come in and say, "Well, my neighbor so...so-and-so is only here two months," you say, "Oh, good, fine. We'll put him down over here." Very arbitrary, exceedingly arbitrary. Just don't see how that possibly works. If you're going to have...if you're going to have something, you need to have it be specific, not wiggle room, not up to different people's opinions. It's got to be...got to be works for everybody. As far as, you know, we had all these inspections before, um, I know I had mine inspected. It wasn't done by sergeants. It wasn't cheap, but it was so thorough that I know there's nothing wrong with it. Most of the other ones, but it's a breeze-by. If we don't see standing water, we don't see something standing, something along those lines, looks fine to me. Um, that's not acceptable. There's got to be a standard. Um, as far as, um, just things that I know, I mean, I know people that live in my neighborhood that have never had their septic inspected, and they're there a lot, you know? And now we have, uh, a more major problem where we have people renting out their Airbnbs, and they're really getting used now. You know, you may have two people that lived in this...that live in this house, but they rent it out for eight weeks in the summertime, and there's 12 people living there every week. I see that in the neighborhood, too. Um, if we're going to have a septic ordinance, you know, we need to know every single solitary piece of property. Is there a septic on that piece of property, and where is it located at? I mean, I understand trying to get things done, uh, in a timely manner, but we shouldn't be trying to get things done quickly. We should be trying to get them done efficiently, as best as we can possibly do it, so we don't have to go back and redo it. This type of system and the way we're talking about this, starting out with this point-of-sale things, to me, I think is actually almost a step backwards. It's just a pretty good excuse to drag out the rest of the process. Well, we have something. We're working on it. We're working on it. Just get it. One nice, whole, beautiful document, and then it's done. Vote on it once, game's over. Just my thoughts, and thank you for your time.
Can I ask you, who did your inspection? You said you didn't use sergeants?
Yeah, we did.
Another company?
Yes, Vic, we had...
We did Scott's.
Scott's did it.
Both are certainly reputable people.
Well, we...we had them do, when I mean, everything. I mean, everything. It was expensive, and I...and I don't think everybody needs to go to that extent, but I felt that, um, we had a raised high-performance system, and we had, but we had it for 20 years, and I just thought we should absolutely know that it is working in the way it's supposed to be, so.
How'd it turn out? Good?
Yeah, yeah, ours was good.
Good for you.
I think that's fine. I had Scott's myself, and I says, "Let's do what you recommend, and then is there something further?"
Yeah.
And she says, "I wanted my own peace of mind, and it's done."
We're in the same boat.
Expensive, yes.
Yeah, well, but I didn't want to come in, somebody coming back to me and say, "Well, you say you did," but, you know, I wanted to make sure it was done professionally and properly, so.
Good for you.
Some very good points. Thank you, Mr. Springsteen.
I do have two things not to, uh, not for the purpose of a dispute. I do have two things not to, uh, not for the purpose of a dispute, but I didn't say these things. When we move, if we adopt a point-of-sale time of transfer, then we start to work on the additional pieces. My goal, uh, was in working with the health department, that using the fetch system, that within three years, we would have ninety to ninety-five percent of all the septic systems located in this township. The other thing is for our short-term rental ordinance that we're working on right now, it is in there that if you operate a short-term rental, you need to get the thorough version of the inspection. Well, let me back up. You need to get an inspection done every three years if you're gonna continue renting it. So that's just additional information. Anybody else got something they wanna say? Come on up, John.
Morning.
Morning to you, sir.
John Barta, Lion Township. Just a few things. Um, I certainly am not, um, an expert on septic systems, but I sure have read a lot of ordinances. And so, um, I do, um, wanna point out a few things. That one of the things, um, Paul said was that the time of transfer does not include all of the other stuff. And there are boilerplate, all of the other stuff, inspections, regular inspections of the other properties, okay? You're gonna do time of transfer inspections of the septics, but then you can say, we're gonna have all township's properties inspected within a period of time.
Two different things.
And, and, well, not, no, they're, they're, they're really not two different things.
As proposed.
Well, well, in your draft, in, in your draft. But there are, and, and what you alluded to is that you wouldn't call it that, because it can't be included, is what you said. Unless, okay, and, and that's what I am contesting, because I have seen multiple boilerplate examples of ordinances that are called time of transfer or point-of-sale that have all of that in there. And so there are boilerplate examples of those. So I think perhaps that is an exaggeration for this board to say that it's gonna be a, a huge job, because there are boilerplate examples of those. You just have to find them. And then you, all you have to do is tweak the language within them as far as how you're going to do the inspections. Are you gonna have all of them done in three years or eighteen months? How, how are you going to do that? So, um, my impression is that is an exaggeration and, and maybe trying to intimidate these guys into saying, look, there's a lot more work here that has to be done. And there is more work that has to be done, but there are boilerplate examples that you can use. So I think that, um, in not calling it a TOT, that's, that's not accurate either, because there are places that have a lot of those things added in. And the, the, the health departments in those townships, um, they support those. So, um, if you have a sense that the health department is your enemy on this, they're not. They're, they will help you. So, um, I, I would also like to remind the board members that are here that our supervisor is really one, one vote. So, um, you know, I think that everybody else.
Nobody's more aware of that than me.
Well, and so if you have an opinion, I would encourage you to, you know, this isn't gonna be easy necessarily, and you were elected to do this. So, so Greg, you know, you've got some ideas, and I agree with you that, that we need more. So, so I, I hope you stick to your guns and say, look, we need to, we need to make sure this, the inspections are done.
This is how far I wanna be.
Well, and I, and I, I would agree with the gentleman before me that doing this piecemeal makes no sense. And so putting it all together at one time, there are boilerplate examples. You can get it done quickly. It's just who's willing to do that. I, I think, you know, Paul's position is pretty obvious. He doesn't really wanna do that, not right now. But there are boilerplate examples, and you can get that done. So, um, and so I, I, I think that's inaccurate. I do know that, I just had my water tested, and I do know that the Central Michigan District Department will accept an inspection from an authorized water inspector. Okay, so they will take that information. So if you are under the impression that it has to be a Central Michigan District water test, that's not accurate.
No, authorized.
Authorized, okay. They have to be authorized, and Raven is authorized. They will take, the Central Michigan District Health Department will also, just like they take, they have authorized inspectors for inspect, to inspect the septic system. They, they will accept those results just like they will from a water test. So that, it's important that you understand, there's no barrier there for the health department. All right, so if you, if you have a perception that there is one, um, in my experience, there isn't. I, I also, um, have some contacts, and I do know that the fetch system is working, and it has been working. So, um, I think it's important that if you feel like there is a barrier to getting this done, because the fetch system isn't working, it is working. And so, but, but again, I'm not an expert, so you need to verify that. But if you have that perception, then you need to, you need to, um, double-check that. And I think that is really all. Again, um, I, I've mentioned in one of the other meetings, I do have a fair amount of time spent, uh, working on septic ordinances, so um, I, I, as a township, um, resident, I would volunteer to help however I can to get this done quickly. So, just, and, uh, that's all I've got.
All right, before you, yeah, don't go away. Could you please email me the example that you were looking at as far as point-of-sale time of transfer applying to the whole township?
The, you, uh, well, you have, you mean, you mean one that includes inspections beyond the point-of-sale? Which, which ordinance are you talking about?
Point-of-sale time of transfer that included inspections beyond the point-of-sale.
Okay, and I have?
Yeah.
I, I have sent that. I have sent that to you already. I sent it, maybe about a month ago. Um, the Torch Lake Township inspection, I will be happy to send it again. But I sent that to the entire, I sent that to the entire board about, at, at least a month ago.
And also, I had heard just yesterday that that fetch system might be back up. You're hearing that that's back up now?
I, I have heard that, yes.
Okay, that's great. And if Raven is authorized, that's great too. 'Cause what we were looking at was potentially having to only use people, well, if we only use people that they authorize, we might have to train somebody if we didn't, if Raven's already.
I got mine done by Michigan State. There was no problem.
Yeah, as long as they're authorized by the state of Michigan.
All right, good news.
Now, that's two people that think we can get this done, uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Pardon?
So this is, that's two residents. I think we can get this done all in one.
Well, there are boilerplate examples. There are boilerplate examples.
Yeah, something, I'll look at.
So you don't, as Paul mentioned several meetings ago, he doesn't wanna build anything from scratch. Well, you don't have to. You don't have to, because there are boilerplate examples, so you can get it done quickly. It's a matter of negotiation between yourselves.
Exactly.
As far as what Paul wants, and if everybody else wants something different, then you can probably get it done.
You know, I'm not the only one here with an opinion.
Jordy of the votes says.
Yeah.
What's goes.
All right, thanks, sir.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else, uh, got any public comment today? All right, we're almost on track for an hour.
Brian Cook, Lion Township. The water testing, like well testing or whatever type of testing you wanna do with water, it is very crucial that the person doing that testing is qualified, has been trained in everything else. We ran into a situation a few years ago with the utility authority in the camp where the person was getting multiple, uh, they took in multiple water samples to Ravens, and it came back E. coli, E. coli. After our operators went out there and properly took the water samples from not only that cabin, but five other cabins around it, they all came back zero. It is, there's, it's very crucial in the part of taking the sample and getting the sample over there in a proper amount of time. So that is very, very critical piece, that whoever's doing that, taking that sample, is qualified to do that, and's been trained. One of the other things I didn't see in here is an exemption for a inspection, which would actually, if you did the whole, uh, township as well inspections, this would be an issue. I see no exemption for those already on a sewer system.
So that I understand exemption for a well test?
No, no, no. Your septic tank ordinance has this whole page of exemptions.
Right.
But there's no exemption in there if the person or the premise is already on a sewer system.
Meaning exemption for the septic inspection?
Yes.
Not the well?
Correct. This is a point-of-transfer, so I'm not sure. I didn't see an exemption if you're already on a sewer system.
You're absolutely right.
If you're already on a sewer system, you don't need a septic inspection, right?
Yeah.
One would think.
Exactly. I think a lot of good information's gonna come out of next week's GLU meeting. Um, there was some, some stuff sent out yesterday, um, about what's gonna be gone through. Myself, Jim Barnwell and myself have been invited to a meeting with Brian Hill and Jim Osling next Monday at Garrish Township.
And they didn't invite me?
Nope.
I am.
Um, I, I believe it's, it's Chair, Vice Chair of the GLU board. That's, that's the reason we're being invited. It's really to talk about the steps of.
With the GLU, with the Garrish board members, but not the Lion ones. That's interesting. I'll have to ask Brian about that.
It was, I was asked, I said, yes, I'd be interested in attending. That's actually what triggered me to put that whole list of tasks together. 'Cause I think that's really what, what, what it's about, is, hey, what do you guys gotta do? What are you looking at time ra, frames? So that's why I put that list together. I think, once we go through that list next week, we'll have a real good idea of what's our timeframe to actually shut GLU down, so that the townships then can take and do what they need to do to make it official and just actually do the dis, dissolution. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Sure, come on up.
Hello, Martha Barta from Lion Township. Just a, a couple of, of points that I wanna kind of reiterate. I am gonna go on record and also agree that when we do a septic ordinance, let's include all parts of it. Not just one part, and then add to it, and add to it, and add to it.
That's three.
And there's a few other people that might agree with this, but, I mean, I do think a septic ordinance is absolutely important. It, it really is. Uh, Clerk Purn, I appreciated your comments and your beliefs, but then I also heard you say, but if you want this, then y'all go along with that. Remember, uh, this isn't the Paul Bertrand septic ordinance.
I want to give this thing.
And I, and I agree. I agree. Um, I do think that there are some things that we can do to help move that process along. You know, we're in a, a, a unique situation here, because even though this is gonna say time of transfer, point of sale, we also know that some of these places just don't technically change hands much. And there was, I don't remember where this happened, and we can look at it, but that, there was an estimate of inline, uh, around Higgins Lake area that it could potentially take seventy-five years for time of transfer to catch up, so that people would get a septic, um, inspection, just 'cause, you know, they don't get transferred very often, you know? It becomes a trust, and it gets passed on to children, grandchildren, that kind of thing. So unless you are specific about what that time of transfer looks like. But then also, when you make an ordinance, you have to be able to enforce it. How are you gonna enforce if you don't really know when something's been transferred? So that's something else to think about.
Good point. There, there is a, there is a responsibility, uh, for the township to make all of the realtors aware and to.
But a Realtor might not even be involved in that.
No, I, I understand, but there is a process to try and address that very thing. Not that it's a perfect one.
I wonder if there's some we can incorporate in, in the actual tax program? Because once somebody, even, even if it goes into a trust, it gets, the name changes into Smith's Trust, as opposed to Jack Smith's name.
Right.
Being on a tax, so that has to change. So I'm just, I'm just wondering. I'll have to look into that and see.
I can throw it.
If that happens, it should, you know, an alarm should go off saying, hey, this got transferred into someone else's name. It's gotta be inspected.
I can ask the attorney.
Do you think they're just doing this to avoid inspections, Kevin?
I think it's just 'cause they don't need to, not 'cause they're avoiding it.
I don't think they're doing it intentionally, but they're doing it mainly, I would imagine, for tax purposes.
Oh, yes, that's what, that's what.
So that's what I'm thinking.
And inheritance.
Yeah, I, I, I'll see if there's something in the, uh, tax system where it can, it can pop up saying this was transferred from so-and-so. Because to keep track of it manually, it's.
Yeah, that would be a nightmare. And then the other thing is, is that, yes, I, I completely agree with the, the total failure. I mean, if you got a failed system, it's not doing what it needs to do. We gotta do something about it. But also remember that there is, there were a lot, I can't remember the number, one hundred and forty-one or something, who's it about? That were not up to standard and were concerning. And, and if a septic system is not up to standard, that's a health, health issue to me, too. So remember that a little bit, too. The complete failures, I get that. But then what's the next level that does deem a health-related issue? You know, is it something that the health department sets up for people? Is it something that you as a township board need to determine, at what level does a health issue come into effect? I don't know. You know, we are kind of on top of each other around here. So, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I would add, I'll, I'll throw to the attorney on that. Whatever he works on to take the loopholes out, I'll ask him about the tax thing too, if there's some. Something right in there. Are there any other public comments? Sure, come on up.
Since you're taking tabs, Vicki Springstead, Lion Township. I would als, I would also say one and done is the best way to go. I mean, all your information at one time, people will be, will be digesting it, talking about it. Might as well go through it once, rather than painfully, uh, on and on and on. And that's pretty much it. I know you know all the details, that there are people that come up here that we see them at our auction when we have a Scott's or a Nick Sargent's, um, pump on the, you know, bid sheet that people say, what do we need this for? A lot of people don't even know they're on a septic. Or I've sat in, uh, this room before, where we talked about various hookups to the Legion, and people say, my septic's fine. It's worked fine for forty years. So we are so overdue, and hopefully the state will maybe sooner and bail all of us out, take care of this problem with a statewide, uh, septic. Unfortunately, it was not voted in last, last time around. But it's desperately needed for Michigan, because we have townships with this one, townships with that one, in different communities, so. But we have to act here to protect our best interest. Higgins Lake, the, what means so much to this community, the health of Higgins Lake. So, thank you, and, uh, that's it. One more for the one and done.
I would say we have, uh, we have one thing that for sure we agree on, and we need the septic system, the septic ordinance in as soon as possible, with all the points that we've tried to make within ourselves. Is there gonna be discussion? Nah. Arguments. That's what there's gonna be. Yeah, but you all know that. We don't, we have five different opinions. You know, hopefully three of them will go along to the right thing, but I disagree heartily with the exception thing. I was, right now, everybody gets inspected. Then if they wanna have to go ten years, because they use it only three weeks a year for that period of time, eh, fine. You know, that might work out, but not to begin with. We got too many people that are not registered at all.
Right.
And it's gotta be fixed.
Right, everybody needs to be inspected. Right, everybody needs to be inspected.
Absolutely.
They've been sliding too much for too long.
Yes, yes, I agree. Thanks for the comment.
Thanks a lot. Any other comments from the public? Come on, Sam, put a cherry on it.
This is gonna be one statement. Sam Madona Jr., Lyon Township. One statement only. Think about an inclusive Lyon Township septic ordinance to include septic inspections, property transfers, and point-of-sale. End of story. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Boy, were you long-winded.
Yeah. Anybody else have a public comment? Okay, I'm gonna close the public comment and again, thank everybody for showing up, but I will make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. You got the time there, right?
Yeah, 10:45.
All right, thanks a lot, folks.